Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the San Alina Planning Commission. Ooh, we're gonna, all right. One moment. All right. Good evening again. Welcome to the San Alina Planning Commission for November 17th, 2015, and I would like to ask Commissioner Kissner to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to ask all of you to take just two seconds to keep the people of Paris in your arms.
And Beirut and around the world. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Koberstein. Commissioner Sweeney.
Here.
Commissioner Monette.
Here.
Commissioner Kissner.
Here.
Chairperson Parker.
Present. Moving on to public forum, this is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion nor take action on matters not described on the agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. Would anyone like to speak at public forum?
Good evening. Jeff Ellsworth, 1434 Sylvaner. I have a report here from the Napa Register from November 8th, 2015. It says, "Napa County motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians have almost twice the chance of being seriously hurt in traffic accidents as residents living in the nine-county Bay Area as a whole." I think we're experiencing a surge in what's been called alcohol tourism. Just in the last few months, I've got these headlines from the Register. This is from last night. Motorist killed during rally for vintage Porsches. Two from Angwin die in auto crash. One fatality in collision on rural Napa County Road. Driver strikes tree in early morning crash. Alcohol involved. St. Helena man killed in rush hour crash on Highway 29. Alcohol cited in death of cyclist on wedding anniversary. Napa State Hospital nurse identified as victim in fatal American Canyon crash. I think we're experiencing something unplanned for here in this town and this region, and we need to, as a community, come together and discuss it with the people that work for the town, the people who are serving the town. We have a serious, serious issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellsworth. Moving on to our consent calendar, we have one item, our approval of the minutes from our October 20th meeting. Do we have any revisions or do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Commissioner Kissner?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Koberstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chairperson Parker?
Yes. I would like to confer to my fellow commissioners and see if we can move a department report before public hearings as Commissioner Sweeney will have to recuse herself from the short-term rentals and just so she doesn't have to wait. Are we all in agreement on that?
Yes.
Okay, if we can move that forward.
Just a brief report tonight. As is typical, towards the end of the year, we saw a little bit of a surge in activity, planning and building activity in the fall, and currently the department is reviewing approximately 40 building permits for code compliance prior to issuance, and then we have about 15 planning applications in process currently. So just to give kind of a heads up, both meetings in December will occur. However, we are canceling the first January meeting, so we will not be meeting on January 5th. So the only meeting for the Planning Commission will be January 19th. Just a heads up.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Okay. Moving on to our regularly scheduled agenda, item number five, public hearings. It is a consideration of conceptual amendment to the city zoning ordinance, San Alina Municipal Code, Chapter 17, dot 134, short-term rentals. If we could have a staff report.
As you mentioned, the project before the commission tonight is a review of the short-term rental ordinance. Essentially, the planning department's requesting direction on potential revisions to the ordinance, and we're kind of providing a menu of options which are essentially repeal the ordinance to prohibit short-term rentals within the city, make revisions to the ordinance to modify and improve enforcement mechanisms, and some other kind of managerial elements of the ordinance itself, or vote or provide direction to increase the number of permit holders through more short-term rental permits, and staff will get into a little bit more of a discussion on each of these after some additional information's provided. In 2012, the short-term rental ordinance was originally passed. This came upon direction from the city council to establish a permitting process for short-term rentals, including appropriate restrictions. The goal was to provide a visitor experience and accommodations as an alternative to hotels, motels, and bed and breakfasts within the city, ensure the collection of payment of transit occupancy taxes, minimize negative secondary effects of short-term rental uses on surrounding neighborhoods, and retain the residential character of the neighborhoods that those were, the short-term rentals were located in. In 2014, staff brought a review of this ordinance back to the city council as the original ordinance did not have a mechanism for extending the permits that were approved for a two-year period, so they were all set to expire. They were brought back to council for review. As a part of that review, not only was there an extension mechanism created or process created, but there were some additional unanswered questions that were not acted on at that time. Council directed staff to bring back the short-term rental ordinance after approximately a year for review and potentially to answer those unanswered questions. In the meantime, as that time had approached, the year, staff held a town hall meeting in this room. Many of the attendees who are here tonight were probably there. Approximately 80 people. There was a significant amount of attendance, and both support and opposition was provided at that time. It was generally mixed, but there was a significant request from a number of attendees to prohibit short-term rentals completely. So rather than move forward on the unanswered questions from the 2012 review, staff has kind of stepped back and brought the menu of options that were discussed and provided earlier to get direction before working on kind of some of the elements of the ordinance that may need to be revised, since there was, seemed to be a significant amount of concern and potentially direction from, requested from the community, to maybe change the ordinance broader than just those questions. So during the review process to get to the meeting tonight and for the town hall meeting, staff received a number of comments. Most of the, or many of the written comments, if not all, have been attached to the staff report and provided to the commission for their review. There's a summary of that information in the staff report, but generally, concerns over noise, security, and traffic impacts associated with concentration of short-term rental units in neighborhoods were essentially the primary concerns that were voiced by many of the folks who had concerns. In response to this, staff forwarded the number of, the list of short-term rental permits to the police department to try to get some input on the number of verified complaints or comments that, or I'm sorry, complaints or violations of city ordinances that had occurred as a part of operation of those short-term rentals. Of the 22 operating, six of those had complaints that were verified by the police department, and I think the largest number were four on any one operator. Majority had no complaints. And I asked Sergeant Fleming to be here tonight to answer any questions about the data from the police department, or if you have any questions specific to complaints. However, obviously, he is a beat officer who's on patrol, so if we could maybe, if there are questions after the staff presentation, if we could target those questions to him, as he is not going to be able to remain for the entire part of the meeting and the presentation. Just as a fact, it's important to identify that short-term rentals provide about $145, $144,000 in TOT to the city. That's direct to the general fund. Staff report includes a pretty substantive discussion of what other communities are doing to address short-term rental impacts. Short-term rentals, as many of you are aware, are not unique challenge for St. Helena. They're being experienced, they're challenging communities throughout the county, and frankly, the state and the country. Staff provided a summary of what other, what other communities are doing, but it's essentially prohibit them or permit them is generally what, what most communities are choosing to do. The county of Napa, the city of Calistoga, and the town of Yountville have all outright banned short-term rentals. They all prohibit them. The city of Napa has allowed, in 2009 passed the ordinance to allow short-term rentals to operate within their city. They allowed 41. Just in November of this year, they passed an ordinance to allow an additional 60, but these are required to be hosted short-term rentals. So essentially, it's a owner occupied, or there's some very specific legal requirements, but it's essentially an owner occupied short-term rental permit. So they'll total 101 permits operating out of Napa, city of Napa. Healdsburg allows a very limited number of short-term rental operations, and only in the commercial downtown zoning district, and that's with use permit approval. There's some additional information regarding what other communities are doing in the staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions. But again, it generally gets back to either permitting them or prohibiting them, although Santa Rosa has chosen to not make any legislative actions on short-term rentals at all. It's also important to talk about some of the, some of the improvements that staff has been working on. Specifically, there's been some revisions or some current, where staff is currently working on rewriting the code enforcement policy manual, so the procedures and policies for how code enforcement is going to be done citywide is currently under review. Staff is talking to the attorneys to see about making some changes to the citation process to give the citation process from the police department more teeth. We're working with the water department on how we could address water violations, et cetera. So we are making some changes to the ordinance in general. We've also contracted with municipal services, who is a firm that provides services for a variety of cities, and they do a variety of services as well, but we've asked them to, A, identify potential violators through a proprietary process that they have to look for unpermitted short-term rentals, audit all short-term rental operators within the city as well as other TOT payers, so hotels, bed and breakfasts, permitted short-term rentals, and then also unpermitted short-term rentals. And as of right now, they provided a list to staff of about 35 that they suspect are short-term rentals operating without permits. Staff has begun the process to begin to engage with them, to begin some enforcement. And then finally, just we have some more permanent staff in the department, and we're starting, or, yeah, in the department, and we're starting to be able to expand on the services that we could provide. There's a period of time when the city had very limited staff resources, and a lot of the staff that was present were interim, so it's hard to kind of have some institutional knowledge and really get traction on long-term policy revisions when you're an interim manager. So all those things have been occurring within the department that were worth pointing out, staff felt. This is just a map of the locations of short-term rentals. I'm sure most, most of you are familiar with those. Very small red dots, kind of hard to see here, but basically, they're, they're fairly distributed through the central part of the city, although on the western side, in the kind of single-family neighborhoods, there is a majority of them. All right. Yeah, if you could advance it, yeah. Have a little bit of technical difficulties, but... Essentially, this brings us back to the menu of options. Slide six, Jim, if you could go there. So, you know, staff is providing a list of three options. Either repeal the ordinance in its entirety, make some revisions to improve the effectiveness of it and give us some more time to implement, or increase the number of, increase the number of units through a variety of mechanisms. So just to provide some background on that, if the decision is made to repeal the ordinance, there's just likelihood that those who have permits currently would, would be able to finish out the life of their permit. They're granted for a two-year period, so if they were prohibited today, they would continue to operate legally through the life of their approved period. But it's also worth noting that they would continue to operate here in the city. So of all the research staff did, any city or municipality who prohibits short-term rentals still has them occurring. They, it's kind of like whack-a-mole to try to get rid of them, and given the fact that our resources are so limited, and code enforcement is selective, meaning, you know, if it's a life or safety issue, that's the number one focus for code enforcement efforts, and we have no code enforcement staff. There's no dedicated staff in the city for code enforcement. It's, it's the planning and building staff that, that do code enforcement in conjunction with the police department, but it's, it's on a kind of a as we're able to basis with the exception of life and safety. So that's just a fact that needs to be recognized. In addition, there is $144,000 coming to the general fund that would no longer be coming to the general fund should they be prohibited. The second option, making some revisions to the ordinance, making some revisions to the ordinance, again, you know, staffing issues have improved. We're starting to build some institutional knowledge. We're starting to get some momentum with some of the changes to the procedures and policies that we'd like to make. So it's worth pointing out that there, that we do feel that we're getting some traction on being able to improve enforcement of the ordinance currently, and then there's also some information provided in the packet which includes revisions to the ordinance that staff would recommend be made separate from these three options. If the ordinance is to remain in place, there's some recommended changes from staff just to improve the functionality of it and, and how enforcement would occur, and it's worth recognizing that enforcement was one of the biggest concerns voiced by folks on both sides of the issue at the town hall meeting, and all of you were in attendance at that meeting. And then finally, the third option that we're asking the commission to consider is the option to increase the number of permit holders through more short-term rental permits, or if there is interest in this, potentially in the creation of a new type of permit, similar to what the county of, or the city of Napa did. So if there is desire to increase the number of permits, that would be an option where it may be an owner occupied type of permit where basically someone has to reside on the property. And some of the concerns that were voiced, again, at the town hall meeting and in written comments, were based around the fact that people are concerned over having an empty home in their neighborhood. They don't know who's there. They don't know the neighbor who's there for the short amount of time, and if someone is residing there and they're a resident of that property, and then they rent maybe a room or a couple of rooms, that's, that would be a mechanism to address that partially. So those are the three options staff is recommending. Just to go over the issues, again, prohibition, if they're prohibited, they will continue to occur within St. Helena, as they do in other jurisdictions who have prohibited them. Enforcement costs would probably increase because there would be no relief valve or no opportunity for folks who are interested in staying to legally do so. So there would most likely be more complaints and more, more desire for staff to enforce the prohibition, and that's tied to the enforcement element of it. Even if the code is revised to make enforcement more beneficial, municipal services contract is very, is very successful, all of those things, enforcement will continue to be a challenge, given that we're such a small city with such limited resources. We have no dedicated code enforcement department, and so under the current ordinance or any revisions, whether it's to prohibit or to allow more enforcement, is going to be an ongoing challenge regardless of the strides that staff is making. So that's just all facts for consideration, and with that, it's recommended by the planning department that the planning commission hold a public hearing on the item to allow members of the public to provide their input, and then provide direction to the city council on the desired revisions to the ordinance, consistent with the menu options provided. Staff is available for any questions, and we will take any other recommendations that the commission has onto the council for consideration, and if there's some, some information that the commission thinks would be worthwhile to the council or some additional analysis they would like staff to provide to the council, we're willing to listen to that as well. Thank you very much. That concludes my presentation, and I just, again, would like to remind you about Sergeant Fleming here, if you have any questions specific to the data regarding complaints or violations.
Thank you, and I also would just like to say thank you so much for this beautiful report. It's very well done. I can tell that a lot of effort went into it, so just wanted to express thanks for that. Does anyone have any questions of staff at this time? You do? Go ahead.
There's some reference in the material to it, "use it or lose it." What made you bring that up? Are, we have a number of permits that are barely being used, or is it because there's a big demand and you feel somebody's taking the place of someone else who might actually generate revenue? What led you to raise that issue?
So there is wide discrepancy in how often the short-term rentals are utilized, or how often those units are rented, and if, if part of the goal was to improve the city finances through increased TOT, then that would be an element of that conversation. I don't know if senior planner Aaron Heacock would like to add anything. He was present for the former review. I was not. I was not part of the city staff at that time, and I know that was part of the previous discussion.
Yeah, actually, I wasn't. I started the week after, but at the June 2014 council review, that was an item that was brought up, and they went back and forth. There was discussion about potentially having a minimum amount of tax that would be paid to the city to maintain their permit. The city attorney had issues with that, but believed that we could limit or create essentially a minimum number of nights per year that, that they would need in order to maintain their permit, because, again, there's only 25 permits, so if someone's not using them, that's, that's revenue that's not coming to the city.
I just want to add, I remember at the city council meeting when that came up, originally, the short-term rental ordinance was, the purpose was to allow homeowners to, you know, maybe earn a little bit when they went on vacation, and the idea was not, it wasn't, you know, it was much different initially. After the first, after the first amount that was earned by the TOT came in, members of the city council at that time were very excited, and they, they saw it then mainly as, as, you know, a revenue, a revenue source, and, or especially as a revenue source, and were then speaking about, well, you know, we have to have a minimum number of days rented, or you lose your permits to maximize the amount of TOT. That's my recollection of what happened, and the thing started to shift at that point.
Thank you, Commissioner Monette. Does anyone have any questions for Sergeant Fleming at this time, so he can go protect our beautiful town?
If there are none, do you have one? Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
I'm going to open up just the public, the public hearing just for answering these questions, and then close it, and then officially open it, just, yeah. So these are just questions just to Officer Fleming, just to...
Yes, you may stand up. And if you could come up to the microphone and state your name, not required, but just for the record, that would be...
I'll have my three minutes to talk.
Yes. You're not required to state your name for the record, though. It is appreciated.
Mary Ann Brooks, Main Street, St. Helena. My question is, I see the report, you said six calls. I know, I mean, I know for a fact that that's not the case, because I probably call six times a month, and so do my neighbors. And, you know, most of my neighbors, the way our, the house is, this STR is, is designed, is you have a side and you have everyone behind as well. The lot goes from Main Street to Pratt, excuse me, to Park. So it's, it's side people, it's back people, it's across the street people. So when they call from their address, they say, "There is a party going on. The noise is, you know, outrageous. It's 1:00 in the morning on a Wednesday, and it's the second house from the corner of Cornell." I mean, they don't know the address. So that's how, you know, most people are presenting it, but I know there's many, many more calls, because I'm one of them. And, you know, I have a constant problem where I'm at, and so I just wanted to reiterate that. I can probably go and get my records pulled down there, right? Will they give me... Yeah, and I can get my other neighbor's records pulled, because we're constantly, constantly calling. And, and you do come out, and they do make a, you know, ask them to calm it down, but if we want to file a complaint, we have to make a citizen's arrest, and as a single woman at 3:00 in the morning with 25 people next door, I'm not going to go knocking in my pajamas and say, "I'm making a citizen's arrest." So, you know, there's, that's an issue. So, but they do respond, they do come out, they do get them to quiet down. So, thank you.
And do you have a question? Or just, all right. Did you have a question? Yes.
My question is, is, I know that's inaccurate, you know, in regards to mine, so I just wanted to set the record straight. I can...
Your question was...
My question is, can I get, I'll get copies of, of my calls and my neighbor's calls? Can I do that?
Yeah. First of all, I want to lay your fears. There's no way at 3:00 in the morning you're going to have to come out in your pajamas and cite, sign a citizen's arrest. That's really not the way that we do it. There are situations wherein, the way that it works is we, as police officers, can't be offended by the noise, and so it has to be someone else that, that's making the complaint, and therefore, in those situations, has to sign a citation in order to make that complaint. What we typically do in those situations is go over to the offending party, a neighbor or whatever, and say, "Look, this has happened. Your neighbor's had it. They're going to sign a complaint against you," you know, "and we'll take that citation over to the, the neighbor. They'll sign it. We'll bring it back and say, 'Here is all the information. We're going to put it down. There's a court date for you. This is the offense.'" You know, you're not saying you're guilty by signing this thing, but you're going to have to show up in 30 days or whatever the court date is. So that's how that works. You're not going to have to come out and face your neighbors. That's a nice thing. Nobody really wants to do that, especially if...
And I've never, I've never been offered that by a police officer.
Really? That's, that's the way that we do that now, so that...
I just know that through efficient game officer, that that's what has to be done. So I know that now, that no officer has said, "Do you want to file a complaint?"
Yeah, we're, yeah. Well, I hope better than ever again.
Well, thank you for clarifying that. That's very helpful and useful information.
The second thing is, in regard to the record, what dispatch does is, is very specific. Whenever a call comes in, it is logged, one way or another. If it's a, if it's a pocket call, 911, or two guys fighting on the street corner, or a drunk, you know, driving somewhere, everything is logged. It doesn't really matter about the severity. It's in there and it's got a, a log number, so if there's...
I'm sorry, excuse me. Can you speak more into the microphone? So, I'm sorry.
I'll get that for you.
Thank you.
I shouldn't have stepped back. All right. At any rate, everything is documented. Whether it's being documented correctly as, as one of these specific incidents, might be up in the air. The system that we have is very, very efficient at keeping these records, and it's very easy for us to run these reports. If they're attached to addresses, it's going to really, really help, because we know what a lot of these places are, know who's gone through these. When we ran these reports, we found very few repeats. We found ones, a lot of ones, maybe some twos, and maybe one of them that had three, but they were spaced apart. It wasn't like the same guys in one week doing this. That's...
It's never the same guys in one week. Usually, they'll shut it, they'll quiet it down once they come out.
Absolutely, yeah. This is one of the reasons we typically are, are not in a position to write the citations. We'll come out, and it's somebody visiting, and we'll say, "Look, you've got neighbors here. We know you're on vacation. You're partying. You're having a good time, but it's 2:00 in the morning. These folks got to get up in the morning." You know, and they'll go, "Oh, my goodness," and they'll, they'll settle it down. And so these things are, you know, pretty, pretty easily rectified that way. I will say this, because it seems like people sometimes are hesitant to call us. I don't want you to be hesitant to call us. We make headway on these things once we document, and that's very, very important. If we don't have the information and we can't log it correctly, it's, it's really hard to, to build a case. So, you know, whether it's a noise complaint or a barking dog or something else, you just got to go ahead and pick up the phone and call us. I feel that people are reticent sometimes, and I wish that that would go away. We don't mind you calling. Don't feel like it's too small.
Do you mind providing the non-emergency phone number for everyone in the audience and at home? Do you...
If I do it by heart, it's...
Do you want me to? I have it.
I know it. It's, it's 9...
I never called that one.
It's 967-2850.
It's 967-2850.
That's not the emergency.
Yeah, that's the non-emergency number.
Oh, the non-emergency, yeah.
Yes. No, the emergency number is 963-3636.
Thank you. I've heard that one, too. All right, that made me look good. All right. Yes?
My name's Tom Delta. I live at 1520 Hillview. If I'm wanting to issue a citizen's arrest...
Yeah, if you could speak into the microphone so people at home can hear.
If I want a citizen's arrest issued, does the person who I'm requesting the arrest be made get to know who I am?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Are you going to protect us from any type of action taken against that person? Like, you know, I mean, I, we had a situation in where I lived where there was five arrests made to one individual, because we tried to work with him... made to one individual, because we tried to work with him, and he would not cooperate. He said, "This is my house, and I'm going to do what I want to do, regardless of, of what you say." The police would go out and knock on the door two and three times. It happened. We were afraid, as the neighbors, because of the, this individual would lay brodies in our, in our front lawn, put salt in our plants, all kinds of, of stuff. So, you have to realize that there's a reluctance on citizens to make these reports. And I would like, also like to ask you, from the comments that you made, would you agree or not agree that there's been adverse impacts in our community because of these short-term rentals?
I couldn't make that call.
Has there been impacts?
No. We haven't gotten out there and seen it.
If you could speak into the microphone, and, thank you.
So, there has no been, there has not been any adverse impacts?
As I've discussed this with the other officers, and we've looked at the calls that we can identify as related to these short-term rentals, I can't say that there has been. We haven't seen it. We discussed this earlier today with some officers that were just coming in and leaving the shift, and most of us felt like we hadn't been out to that many of those. We've been to a lot of noise complaints. It could be that some of those were tied in, but I couldn't honestly tell you that. So, to say that, that this is having a negative impact on the community, I couldn't make that call, and I'm...
If, if there's a noise complaint, is that an adverse impact?
It is, but I don't know that it's related to short-term rentals. But absolutely.
You just said a few minutes ago that there was, what, six or seven?
These were over an extended period of time. Noah's got the spreadsheet with all those incidents on it. They don't seem to be recurring in these same places, though. There isn't a hotspot where we're seeing this stuff happen constantly. That's what I was talking about. If there had been, we surely would have, you know, just as officers going out there again and again and again, we'd have the sense of that. We don't have the sense of that, and the numbers that we've run, based on the addresses for the short-term rentals, haven't borne that out to us yet. So, that's what we're looking at.
It's true that it has an adverse impact.
Can I, can I, can I tail off of his question on not feeling safe making a citizen's complaint? Because that is concerning, and for citizen safety, on what they can do to feel more comfortable, or remedies if, if the neighbor does retaliate.
Absolutely. We're all protected under the law, and you shouldn't have to fear for your safety or your life. There's, there's no way that that would be acceptable. The sometimes difficult flipside of that is that we can't go after people that haven't committed crimes yet. That doesn't mean we have to wait for them to hurt you. You know, we take action before that, but you shouldn't have to be concerned about it, and you should have every expectation that we'll be there to take care of those things. If you feel threatened, we'll go out and make contact, and we'll begin this process, and we'll make sure that they know we're there. With most people, that's enough to quell their desire to, to give you trouble, you know, to make trouble for you. So, that's where that begins. In addition, I mean, we have a really fast response time here.
Yeah, we do.
We, I mean, we really do. A hand up back there?
And if you do have a question, if you could come up to the microphone, that our tech support just put up for us, so people at home can hear you.
I just had a quick question. I was just wondering...
If you can speak into the microphone.
Sorry. Was your, was your problem with a permitted vacation rental, or...
It demonstrates the lack of employment capability of our city with an employee desert.
No, no problem. I was just curious.
Okay, if we could leave the questions for the officer at this time, where I will open up the public comment for general questions, but right now, I just want to make best use of Sergeant Fleming's time.
I have a question. There seems to be some of a, somewhat of a disconnect, I'm inferring from what people are saying, between the noise complaints you get and the connection that there might be between those and an STR. When you get a noise complaint, is it a standard question from the dispatch person? Is, do you know if this is a, if this is a short-term rental? Or do you check that out? Or, you know, I mean, how is that going to...
Typically, we don't know. However, many times when we go out, we don't know what the address is. It's the house to the left of me. So, we'll go out, we'll see what the problem is. We always communicate with dispatch what that address is. If it turns out to be short-term rental, we'll, we'll probably discover that later. And at some point, just as officers going out, we'll, we'll learn that on our own, but...
So, there's a cross-resistance that might be made?
There is, but there isn't one on the wall in the PD we're going to go, "Oh, look, that's a short-term rental."
Is that possible to do?
I don't see why not.
Yeah.
I would like to have a knowledge of what the short-term rentals are, and we hadn't discussed that yet. Noah's got all that, and it would be easy for him to, I mean, I know, I know he would give that to us if I asked him.
That seems really important for the discussion.
And I would just add, the, the problems with the citations are one of the things that we've initiated fixing with the city attorney's office. So, they're looking at what we need to do to eliminate the, the need for an additional kind of corroboration on the noise complaint. So, that, that is underway.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Sergeant Fleming? If you could go up to the microphone, that would be most appreciated.
Hi, I'm Paulina. I have one question, and when you go out there to knock on somebody's door and say, you know, "Somebody called, blah, blah, you know, keep it down," would that be an automatic citation, and that could be a warning? And then, if you get called a second time, then you issue the citation? Because to me, it seems a little, I don't know.
Yeah. The answer to that is, our, our goal is to gain compliance. It's not to punish people. The truth of the matter is that most of these people are somewhat unaware of what they're doing, or they're just being careless, and maybe a little rude. Once we bring it to their attention, invariably, they, they acquiesce, you know? They act like they're sorry. Most of the time, I think they are. If we've got to come back a second time, then it changes, you know, because we're nowhere dealing with something else, and we'll issue a citation. It's the same thing with barking dogs, you know?
If, yeah, perfect. Yeah, that's fine, as long as you can... Can you wait until you're up into the microphone, so everyone can hear you back at home?
If you issue a citation on a second offense, what is the code section that you use?
I have to look it up each time. I got a cheat sheet, man. I'm sorry.
It's not in the 457th Penal Code?
I, it's not in the Penal Code, it's on our local ordinances. Yeah.
I have a question about the citation as well. If there were a citation...
Can I have one more question?
Excuse me, of course.
Yes, yes, of course.
How many citations have you issued in St. Helena?
How many have I?
To short-term rentals?
Dozens and dozens, over the years.
No. How many? You've issued dozens of them? Dozens and dozens?
In my time here, oh, yes. Certainly.
Not to short-term rentals.
Not to, to short-term rentals.
Sorry, for, for this kind of, I thought you said just ordinances, city ordinances. For a noise violation?
Yes.
I haven't had to do one for a while. I've probably, in the last couple of years, issued four or five.
Okay.
My question was, if you issued a short-term, I mean, a citation to a short-term renter, would they be responsible for it, or would the owner of the property be responsible for it?
I knew somebody was going to ask that question. I really did. If I were to walk out and do it tonight, I'd issue it to the person making the noise. And, and that's my, my stance on it right now. I might be told I'm wrong on that.
But if they're from out of the country or out of town, would...
What I can do is issue them citation, you know? I, I can't control them getting on a plane back to, you know, Spain.
Maybe we could, maybe they're, you're saying, I mean, maybe that could change. I'm getting a sense that that could be something that we could ask for, that the owner be informed.
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to see that.
I see one more question for you.
So, once again, can we make sure that we're talking about legal short-term rentals? Because I think there is a difference between legal and illegal short-term rentals. I think somebody that comes in and goes through that process of getting a permit, knowing that there are several people in town that do not have them, and so, if we're talking about people that have legal permits, those are people that have already shown consideration for going in and doing the right thing. So, I just want to make sure that we're not lumping them in with the illegal permits, because they're already doing something that's illegal, and not, you know, they're not doing the right thing, so...
Thank you. I think, I think we're all definitely aware that a few bad berries definitely can taint the whole bunch, but we're, we're aware that there are some really good short-term rentals out there as well, so... Does anyone else have any other questions for Sergeant Fleming at this time?
I have one. Go ahead. If you issue this citation, then what is it, a nominal fine when they get to court, or what?
They usually run about $50. Some of them are $100. It just depends. There is, it's a fairly long list. Each code section is that long, and we choose the appropriate one, but they do vary.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions for Sergeant Fleming? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to press a go ahead.
Does staff have anything that they would like to add before I open up the public hearing? All right, I would like to open up the public hearing. If you could state your name, though it's not required, that would be most appreciated, just to keep track for our own records. And if you could please observe the time limit of three minutes, that would be most appreciated. And if you could just come up civilly...
I will add, the, the crime statistics or the complaint statistics are the last page of the packet.
Thank you. So, with that, public hearing is open. Who would like to speak?
This is an encroachment, commercial encroachment on our residential zoning. Now, there's some people that have had, you know, have B&Bs that have been here for a long time, it's legal. The people who moved next door, bought the house next door, knowing there was a commercial operation, I respect that. But this is a, kind of a surreptitious encroachment, commercial encroachment, this short-term rental thing. It's happening all over the world. It's happening in Barcelona, it's happening in Hawaii, it's happening in Berlin, it's a, these commercial operations come in, and they buy up houses, they turn it into a vacation getaway, whatever, and they, they encroach upon the neighbors, and then the neighbors have to move. The fact that these people have called the police numerous times, Jim, you should be the first person standing up with me here, saying, "Hey, let's stand with our community and our citizens, and protect our citizens from this egregious behavior." You know? It's like these drunken parties that go on, and then we're, we're kind of pretending it's not happening. Well, it is happening. And I personally am not going to wait around. So, one of these illegal or disruptive, even if it's legal and it's disruptive, it's still an encroachment. So, I've got these signs that I'm going to put. I'm going to take these out. There's one in my neighborhood. One of the things I worry about with the illegal ones is that there, there's nobody testing them. There's nobody going by and checking them to make sure that they're up to standards. So, I worry that the people staying there don't know it's illegal, right? So, they stay there. Do they know about lice? Do they ask about lice? Well, hey, that's, it could be, there could be a lice outbreak.
If we could be respectful, thank you.
Another thing is, if somebody has a hot tub, you know, at hotels now, they have to put diarrhea warnings on the swimming pools. They do. And so, say, say you're staying at a short-term rental, and you don't know, somebody was staying there two weeks earlier. So, I would say, "Did you ask about contagious diarrhea?" And I'll stand outside somebody's house with this, and I have these cords, and I'll put them, I'll wear them like sandwich boards. If there's an illegal or disruptive short-term rental in my neighborhood, or I'll go to another neighborhood with another community member who's suffering from this, because our, our, our administration didn't stand up and protect our citizens from this commercial encroachment of their residential zoning. Another thing I worry about, crab lice. Are these, are these illegal short-term rentals being inspected for crab lice? Crab lice, contagious diarrhea, lice, all of them not very pleasant things. That's my timing. Infected, that's another one. If my neighborhood is infected with a short-term rental, I'll stand there with this sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helsworth. And bless you. Who would like to speak next?
As stated by our city planners, the city of St. Helena does not have the resources to maintain or enforce the short-term rental ordinance. We cannot continue short-term rentals if our city cannot maintain or enforce the ordinance. You know, our fire inspection's being done every year, our tax being reported every year, all the things that are required on the short-term rental ordinance that these owners sign is that their permit will be revoked if those things aren't done. The city has put hotels in the middle of our residential neighbors, such as mine. It has pit neighbor against neighbor. We're having to call the police constantly for loud noise and drunken parties. I have an example of my last call to the police, of, this is coming from inside my bedroom. I have a two-feet variance next to my owner, my neighbor, and this is what I have to call the police about. I don't know if you can hear it. Is my noise on?
[INAUDIBLE].
Yeah, that's what I have to hear at 1:45 on a Wednesday. And it's all the time. And there are calls. I will obtain my list for you and send them to you of all my neighbor's calls on it. The, you know, I also have photos and many more video recordings of the noise, the lineup of the cars, the limos, the buses, the gardeners, the maids, the pool cleaners, that it, that I have to endure in front of my house. No one is manning the store. It has destroyed the character of my neighborhood. The city has pushed this on our neighborhoods. We should be able to vote on this. No one cares about my neighborhood more than we do. I respectfully ask that your recommendation to the city council be to repeal the STR ordinance.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Lana Ivanoff, and I live on Pine Street. I'm going to give you two, two quotes that are included in the summaries of those 104 pages that you have in front of you. One of is, "Managing short-term rentals is a challenge. Enforcement of these short-term rental regulations is costly and requires significant staff resources." That was put in there by the city planners. The city of St. Helena has a broken and highly flawed and unenforced short-term rental ordinance right now, and it's been mismanaged for over three years. It's time to repeal it, take a step back, regroup, get your ducks in a line, and figure out how to do this the right way. I was going to say a lot of different things tonight. I was going to kind of summarize the reports that you have in front of you, because I didn't think you were going to do it, but thank you, Noah, you did it. But one of the things that I was going to bring up is another thing that you had written in there, which was, "According to staff, the city is using valuable resources at this time to catch up with this ordinance." You didn't say that, I said that. During, you're doing everything possible to bring it into full compliance and trying to find the short-term rentals in town that are operating illegally. What you did say is that the Public Works Department, the City Attorney's Office, that's big money, the Planning Department, the Police Department, you're all searching for the information you need to identify the problems of enforcing this ordinance as it reads today. The city's also entered into that contract with that firm to look for the unpermitted short-term rentals. My question is, do we want to pay money for staff to patch this ordinance and tweak it? Or is it better if we just repeal it, look at it again? Also in that staff report is the survey that some residents took. I was participated in that and I want to say we did it honestly, forthrightly. I offer the invitation to any of you to go out and march the streets. We took the list of short-term rentals and we talked to neighbors next door and within that 300-foot radius, and the results of that survey had 82% of those people that we interviewed felt negatively impacted by the short-term rentals. 86% claimed that the character of their neighborhoods had been changed and they felt that the short-term rentals should not be allowed at all. Another part of this report that you have in front of you is the town hall meeting. And I was going to go into great detail, I'm not going to, because you did summarize some of it, but I was really disappointed. We had 80 people at a town hall meeting and the city made great efforts to put up boards and write down the comments of everybody. And then everybody was given two stickers to vote on the things that we thought were the most important things and what the city needed attention with. And nobody has seen those numbers. We've seen a summary, but we haven't seen the numbers. So in closing, I just want to say that this is an unenforceable, costly, difficult-to-manage ordinance, and I think that you need to pay attention to what the people that live close by to these ordinances, to the short-term rentals feel. And I'm looking at that $145,000 in TOT tax and I'm wondering, is this worth it? Are you guys willing to sell us out? I mean, come on, tourist and money over the sanctity of our neighborhoods? I just, I wish you would repeal this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner members, my name's Dave Brotmarkel, 503 Fulton Lane, and I am a short-term rental permit holder. This is coming loose here. A couple of things. We, as a group of short-term rental permit holders, have been meeting about these sorts of issues. And I want you to know that we are as concerned as any about those that are causing problems within the city, and that it's not going unnoticed. There is a renewal process that should eliminate those habitual problems. And as short-term rental permit holders, as a group, we support that. We do not want the impact to be bad on the neighborhoods. And it appears to me that there's only a few that are causing most of the problems. I think with the officers' conversations and with the things that we know about it, it's, it's, most of them are fine. We certainly not having any problems. We do it just occasionally when we go on vacation, things like that, but there's others that rent more. But I want you to know that we do have a group working on this very issue, and we feel the pain, and we'll do whatever we can about it. And I think that if this ordinance stays intact, which I believe it should, I strongly believe it should, an ordinance, a short-term rental ordinance, a good writ, well-written ordinance, is better by far than no short-term rental ordinance, because there is enforcement abilities, enforcement when you have an ordinance like this. And I just want those that are having trouble with this to know that you're not alone. We feel your pain, we see it, and we will do, as a group, whatever we can to fix that. So it's not, it's not, believe me, you're not standing up there alone, we feel it. And again, the majority of our short-term rental permit holders, the legal ones, are not having the trouble that you're describing. There's only a few. And I want you to bear that in mind, that, that we care. And I think this ordinance can be tightened up a little bit and work remarkably well for St. Helena. And I applaud, I applaud St. Helena for actually taking this step, because there's lots of communities around that have not, and as Noah said, they still have the short-term rentals, those are not going away, because it's lucrative and, and we don't have enough hotel rooms in St. Helena to meet the demand. Maybe one day we will, but today we don't. So, just wanted to let you know that we hear you and we're working towards that. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Good evening. Pam Simpson with the St. Helena Chamber of Commerce. And it's falling. Okay, sorry about that. The chamber supports staff recommendation number two, and to encourage the planning commission to make minor revisions to the ordinance, to improve the enforcement mechanisms and allow time for these improvements to be enacted and properly enforced before making more decisions. We feel this is a fair and reasonable compromise and we hope will lessen the community impact and allow the city to benefit from a trend that is not diminishing and a source of revenue for our city that is desperately needed. We want to just touch on a couple of things. First of all is the economic impact of short-term rentals. Short-term rentals have already proved to be an economic driver for St. Helena, producing approximately $144,000 in TOT last year. The staff report accurately points out that if STRs were to go away, there is no backfill, there's no, nothing ready to go to replace that funding. Then there is the ripple effect. We know that from the 2014 visitor profile, the average visitor who stays in Napa Valley will spend approximately $389 per day in the valley. We know that the city's TOT reports that the current occupancy rate for the short-term rentals is approximately 25% or 91 days a year. So conservatively, using that 389, um, average daily spend, and we're talking about just one person at a short-term rental, not two or three, which is usually what's there, times the 91 days, and then times the 25 legal, uh, short-term rentals, we can calculate that approximately $890,000 in additional spending will occur in our restaurants, our shops, and our wineries, because St. Helena has short-term rentals. St. Helena currently has about 220 hotel rooms. Our neighbors in Calistoga with 790, Yountville with 450, have the luxury of banning short-term rentals, because they have the lodging capacity to serve a higher number of guests. Unlike property tax and sales tax, where a small portion stays in the city, 100% of TOT remains in the city of St. Helena. Calistoga and Yountville city budgets are not facing the same deficits we are, because they have embraced the financial gain that lodging affords. Both realized earlier, earlier than St. Helena, that visitors who pay, or who stay, pay. And they are reaping the benefits from the overnight guest. Their lodging experiences higher occupancy rates, because there is ample supply and variety, and the restaurants are full for the second or the late-night seatings, mainly due to the ripple effect of having people stay in their towns. St. Helena has had the, has had an opportunity to gain from short-term rentals guests. A quick poll to our restaurants yesterday netted me about 10 responses from St. Helena general managers, who indicated that short-term rental guests have positively, positively impacted their bottom line. We feel that this is, that we agree with the staff analysis that short-term rentals are an emerging trend, and is indicated in the San Francisco's recent ballot initiative. Demand is there, and if we do not restrict and enforce, the potential of the underground market is inevitable. I have a couple more comments, but...
You can keep going.
Okay, thank you. And we agree with staff report that the illegal ones are much harder to enforce. Those communities that do not put constraints on short-term rentals are soon going to face bigger issues down the line. The issue to be discussed is not whether or not to have short-term rentals, but instead, how to focus on how many are enough, and what we can do to improve enforcement, and how do we make sure our neighborhoods are protected. Some consideration should be given to where the rentals are permitted and sure they are evenly distributed, thus making them less impactful to the neighborhoods. 25 is enough, until enforcement is satisfactory and the ordinance is tested. Legal permit holders who do their best to work with their neighbors should not be punished with difficult renewal process. In fact, because they generate revenue, because they are cooperative, because they have no complaints, they should be encouraged and assisted. For those adhering to the ordinance, renewal of their permits should be fast-tracked to give advantage to future bookings. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Hi, Suzanne Gay, Spring Street, and also an active Airbnb user myself, out in the great big world out there. So, I am not currently a permit holder. My fiance and I are looking for a permit at this time. We're also looking for a permit for an occup, owner-occupied unit. We believe strongly that this will not detract from our neighborhood, and in fact, we bought into the neighborhood, loving the nature of it and wouldn't do anything to detract from that. We feel that having responsible owner on-site will mitigate a lot of the issues that people are bringing up here. We don't want the noise in our backyard as much as you do. We're living there on property on-site. We actually don't have the luxury of buying into our home 20, 30 years ago, like many other people probably in this room did, even 10 years ago. As a young couple, living here in the Napa Valley in St. Helena, both working, I with two jobs, my fiance with two as well, this extra income would be huge for us. It would allow a young couple, people who want to live here for the rest of our life, to actually stay in our home, because it gives us the extra income that we would need to fix up our property, to actually add to the neighborhood. And we don't feel like a few bad apples, which is what it sounds like, people with party houses, we're looking to rent a one-bedroom apartment unit under our home. We don't feel like a few bad apples should detract from what we really feel is the future of travel. This is the way the trend is going. People are traveling more and more and trying to stay in communities and at homes, and responsible owners should be allowed that opportunity for the extra income, but also to host those people in their own homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next?
Hi, my name's Lisa. I just want to throw a few numbers out there. I know last meeting in September, I went on VRBO and looked up and I saw 90, uh, short-term daily rentals right on VRBO. So, I just wanted to throw a few numbers. I also want to make sure that we keep the value of your houses, be it the short-term rentals or your residences. But, you know, we do have Four Seasons opening up in Calistoga, 90, 90 rooms, and I think it's 21 residences. We also have the place, I think it's called the Mystique, that's opening up further up in Calistoga in two years, within two years. We also have Las Alcubis, that's 70 rooms, that's opening up spring 2016. And then we have the Meritage, opening up with 500, I don't know the ratio, on residences/ vacation, uh, timeshares versus the hotels. So you also want to keep those numbers in mind when you're looking at the long-term, five-year plan. And I think having a review of permits every two years and vetting people according to where they live, you know, and looking at that, not making it a 25 people and having them being able to renew, but having the option to look at the people who are coming up and really looking at the landscape, you know, the, you know, local neighborhood. And, you know, there's some I heard that were five rentals on one street, which is crazy. But I just wanted to throw a few numbers out there, that's it.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
If I can make this work. So I'm Ernie Cabral, we have a short-term rental at 2150 Spring Mountain Road on a two-acre parcel. And I'd just like to characterize the way I feel a short-term rental should be, that one of the short-term rentals, I can only speak for ourselves. Ours happens to be a family house, it's been in the, my wife's family for the last 80 years, and her great uncle lived in the house for several decades. Her mother and father lived in the house, the great uncle and aunt raised his, her mother. They lived in the house until just a few years ago, when they passed away. When they passed away, the family obviously has a lot of great memories in the house. They have, you know, it's a place where we gather, it's a, it's, it's, it's like our house. So we have a lot of respect for the house, and, and we would be very upset if we had people that were staying there that were disrespectful, disrespectful to the neighbors. We have a lot of connection to the community, we have a lot of friends in the community. We have a, so, we make contact with everybody that stays in that house, and our experience has been that the people are coming up here to relax and enjoy, and we would be very disappointed if they were partying and disturbing the neighbors. So, that's not our intent. We love the house, we love the community, we have several good friends in the community, we respect our neighbors, we appreciate the concerns that all of the neighbors have, and a few thoughts are that the majority of the permit holders have done a great job and they're respectful of the neighbors and the community, so allow those permits to continue in perpetuity. Maintain the modest number of permits at 25. Those that are doing it illegally should be eliminated, fined, and pay their back TOT. There should be repercussions, including loss of their permit, for those that are disrespecting the process and disrespecting the neighbors. Coordination between the Police Department and the Planning Department, as stated, should be implemented, and the ordinance should be revised per the staff report markup and enforced. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Good evening. It's nice to hear that permit holders are as concerned as those of us that are opposed to the ordinance are. It's, it's nice to share that information, because sometimes we feel like we're out there by ourselves. Good evening, my name is Tona Kavakovic. I've been a resident of St. Helena for 61 years. I am against the practice of short-term rentals for many reasons, here are just a few. Short-term rental permit owners using their short-term rental address as their primary mailing address is deceiving. In many cases, the St. Helena address is not their primary residence. Obviously, they must be living elsewhere while they are renting out their property as a short-term rental. The permit holders list posted on the city website makes this clear. Yes, we know there are a few permit holders that do actually live on-site, otherwise, by definition. The owners of the STR properties are truly STRs, otherwise known as short-term residents. Some of the short-term residents are renting their properties as party houses, as we've discussed this evening. Unfortunately, the properties they own are in residential neighborhoods while being used for commercial purposes. Several of us here this evening are long-term, full-time residents, who are fighting to preserve our neighborhoods and our way of life, a way of life to which we are guaranteed by our residential zoning laws. My intention is not to make this a dispute between full-time residents and part-time residents. This is a dispute between residents and non-residents. This is becoming a battle being fought daily in our residential neighborhoods here in St. Helena. If non-residents want to party in St. Helena, they can party in non-residential areas of town. We call those hotel and motel locations "commercial zones." Isn't that why the city differentiates between commercial and residential zoning? We have zoning laws so that we can have confidence in and predictability about our long-term commitment to preserving our way of life. We have the right and duty to take a stand when our way of life is being challenged by those who would violate our laws. Please do not allow commercial businesses, like these short-term rental party houses, in our residential neighborhoods. It's not right, it's not fair, and it's not legal. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Good evening, Jim Sweeney, 1407 Kearney Street. First and foremost, they are legal, for the moment, to have the short-term rentals in the community. The second one is, is that, like the chamber, I just want to advocate that we review and enforce. To terminate this, when we've just made so many successful strides in the last 90 days, about, what are those, Muni Services, the Town Hall, we're communicating, we're all a small town, but I just want to ensure that we should take time and be patient to allow this to play out. The short-term rental community, we meet often and we discuss weekly about either problems or things that we'd want to advocate between each other. So you have a community that's reacting, responding to what we know. There have been some complaints tonight, clearly some homes that must be, you know, offensive in the neighborhood. We also want to know who they are. We're very happy having Sergeant Fleming correlate these complaints, which is now a new process, to these homes, because we are citizens within the community and we don't want those violated as well. The next one is, is that, although we don't want to go down the path of whack-a-mole, is that if this is terminated, you, we are in a situation where if there are 90 in the community, essentially maybe 10 or 15 of the permitted shut down, you still have an issue with 75 or so in the marketplace. And so, if we can go through and have a permitting process that is visible to everybody, then what it does, it gives the city a cornerstone from which to go and find the illegals and have an action that is really manageable. And then finally, I know this isn't a case of economics, but it does make sense for the city and for the economic development, is that with $144,000 raised to date, many of us have really just figured out how to do of us have really just figured out how to do this responsibly and will probably contribute well into the 250,000 to 300,000 this next year. So once again, I also would like to ask that you consider recommendation number two. Let this permit process play out. The last 90 days have been amazing with the new city planning department, is that let's review and identify the correlation between the police reports. And then let's come back and revisit this once these issues are out in the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Good evening. Connie Wilson. I respectfully request that your recommendation to the city council be for total repeal of the short-term rental ordinance. This experiment has failed. You've had three years to tweak it. You've had no enforcement. I don't see anything that's changed in 90 days other than actually us rallying the community and to see how many people are actually against it. There are no fewer illegal rentals today than three years ago. Many neighbors of short-term vacation rentals have been negatively impacted and the character of residential neighborhoods has been degraded. No amount of compliance or city regulation can change these facts because the impact itself is the allowance of the STR in our neighborhoods. Mitigation comes through the removal of the source of that impact, not through regulation, collecting tax, or by calling the police. Again, I'll reiterate, residential zoning exists to prevent family neighborhoods from commercial and transient intrusion. Since the Town Hall meeting, I and other concerned citizens have been speaking with neighbors and many residents about commercial activity in our neighborhoods. And without a doubt, the overall consensus is that the city has pushed this ordinance on its citizens without foresight or thought of consequence in its pursuit of any kind of revenue. The 22 legal STR permit holders currently represent less than 1% of St. Helena households. This means that 99% of households have no say regarding the impacts to their neighborhoods. More than 25% of the permits are held by non-residents who probably don't really care about the negative impacts because they don't even live here. We have hundreds of signatures on a petition calling for a complete repeal of the STR ordinance to preserve the integrity and safety of our neighborhoods. And we will have enough signatures to call for an initiative if necessary. The flaws of this ordinance are at its core, so it simply can't be tweaked to make it acceptable. It must be repealed, and we believe that the majority of St. Helena residents support this view. And it's not just about the money because that is all I have heard tonight from those in favor of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Good evening. My name is Jill Rousseau, and I am a short-term rental permit holder. I haven't had any complaints on my home. I do live in Napa County, at the end of a long windy road. My children go to school in this town, and I take care and check on my home every day. I do understand that a lot of you have been out talking to the neighbors. It's a small town. It's a beautiful town. My neighbor told me that people have been out speaking to him and trying to suggest to him that he had a hotel next to his home. But he and I have a great relationship, and I understand that he declined to sign your paperwork. And he and I had a nice conversation and will continue our conversations if there's ever a problem with my home. I have to ask, how many of those signatures on that paper are really influence right next to a home? And I also have to ask, is it fair to ask the city to shut down the permits after they've only just started trying to properly enforce them, after they themselves have explained that they haven't previously had the resources? There's a couple of things to know about short-term rental as owners. And one of them is that, like anything in life, it takes a little bit of time to learn how to be a good permit holder. I've never had any complaints, so I value my permit and I also, above all, value my neighbors. It's in all my contracts. I can throw anyone out at any time. And my guests come and go, but my neighbors are always there. And I think that if you had permit holders who cared about their neighbors and valued their neighbors above all else, that you wouldn't have any problem. And it sounds like with a little bit of enforcement, you could probably have a group of people who cared about their community and cared about their neighbors and just paid their taxes every month to the benefit of all the people in the city. So it's a beautiful city. And the only reason I asked the policeman about your home is because that's heartbreaking. I can't imagine, and I've heard you too, I can't imagine to have that at my home. Somewhere I live, I have two little children. I can't imagine. So whether it's a long-term renter, or an owner, or a short-term owner, that should be addressed. And I'm so sorry for you. And I'm sorry for you too.
Hi, my name is Paulina Umeris Green. I have a short-term rental permit. I'm a 30-year resident of St. Helena. I think repealing the permit would be extreme. I think would be reviewing the ordinance. One of the things in the ordinance, the first ordinance, the original ordinance, was that if the owner didn't live in residence, they had to assign somebody, a name, and a person that would be within reach 30 minutes. So if any neighbor around the short-term rental heard any noise, they will call that person. If there was no response in 30 minutes, then the second call went to the police. So that's one of the things that could be enforced. Just to give you an example, I had a lawyer write my contract. I am very clear in that contract about the noise ordinance. And I send people a copy of the noise ordinance so they know by 10:00 PM they have to be inside or, you know, because I don't want that inconvenience. I tell them that our neighbors have the right to enjoy their quietness. About these signatures, I have a friend that has been absent for five months, and she takes walks every day. And she told me that the other day at the corner of Madrona and Hillview, a gentleman that she thinks lives in that brown house came out and wanted her to sign a petition against the short-term rental permits. And she said no, she wasn't going to sign anything because she's been away for five months and she really didn't know what was going on, and she declined. So that posed a little bit of question in my head, you know, who is signing the petition? I mean, if they're really people living close to the short-term rental permit holders and if they're impacted. And there was one more thing I wanted to bring up. Oh, oh, Mr. Ellsworth, you said that when people buy a house here in St. Helena, they know who their neighbors are and, you know, and they're being a short-term rental permit holder next door, you know, it's not a cool thing if they wanted their peace and quiet. I'm in a situation right now, I'm, there were two bed and breakfasts on one, we share a fence, and I have a suspicion that-
If you could, if you could address the commission, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I have a suspicion that they're being run without supervision. Because two nights ago, there were people out there until 1:00 in the morning, talking, you know, and fire, you know, they have the fire going, same thing the next day until about midnight. I understand that bed and breakfast need to have either the owner or a manager leaving the property. I didn't want to call the police because it didn't, I think, you know, it wasn't that big of a deal. But when I moved, when we bought our house, that was a single-family home. Then the owner remodeled it, and then he got a permit, and then he made an addition, and then he sold it. So I had no, you know, you don't know when you buy something that is going to stay the same way.
Okay, if we, okay, we're going to stop, thank you. And Jim, if we can move the podium to face the commission, thank you. We're going to have a quick technical moving around. Encourage you to talk to us rather than the audience. No, it's okay.
Thank you. I'm Kathy Broatmarkle, 503 Fulton Lane. I have a permit holder along with my husband David, who spoke earlier. And we live in our home full-time, and we are very involved in this community and strive to maintain the unique character of St. Helena. I believe in keeping St. Helena strong. I have been active in many causes towards that end, and I almost find it hard to believe that I'm, so to speak, in opposition to people that I know and care about. But I really feel tonight we need to focus on the issue, came up in the Town Hall meeting over and over, enforcement and the regulation of a stringent short-term rental permit ordinance. Abolishing this ordinance would be a mistake. Having a strong ordinance in place is the way to provide a tool to control short-term rentals. As we've heard, they're going to happen anyway. This way, we have an ordinance that we can actually enforce. I will repeat what many people have said to Mary Ann Brooks and the people who have had these problems. I am absolutely heartsick, and I don't understand why that permit holder has not had that permit revoked if she's going through what she's going through. It's just, it's really unconscionable that she should have to go through that. If it is a legal permit, it should be yanked. The petition that's being circulated, I do have to say that I've heard these stories as well, that people are being approached, they are completely unaware of this issue, and they're not directly affected, and they're being urged to sign this. And it's easy to get involved emotionally, the theory of short-term rentals ruining our town. I really feel that these people are not being told the whole issue. They're getting one side, and they're being told they're living next to a hotel. Well, we rent our house 26 days this year. That hardly resembles a hotel. Now granted, we're out of the urban limit. We're on Fulton Lane. If I lived on a densely populated residential neighborhood, we probably would not be doing this. And I'm the first to say there are neighborhoods and locations where these should not be happening. And I feel that in a strict renewal process, the ones that have been creating problems should simply not be renewed. I think enforcement is crucial, and it seems like the city is starting to work on that, as Noah has stated, especially addressing the illegal rentals without permits with this company that is now going after them. We know of a party who rented illegally for two years, which we do not condone, and they had to pay all their back TOT tax, and they have been fined $1,000 per day in penalties for each day rented. And it's a big chunk of money. The revenue thing, I just don't think we can ignore that. A city has formed a task force to identify revenue sources, and this could potentially be 200, maybe 300,000 dollars. And our house, we typically rent to a family because a family can't really stay in St. Helena. It's cost prohibitive for a family to come here. And we don't have enough hotels, but I think most of us don't want a whole lot more hotels. But because of that, that family is going to go to Napa. And not only are they going to spend their rental money there, their restaurant money and their shopping money is going to also be sent. So I respectfully request that responsible, conscientious, community-minded current permit holders who are in full compliance, who have never had a complaint, should be permitted to continue. And we welcome restrictions. We welcome limiting the number of rental days. We prohibit certain activities, no parties, no events, no weddings, no rehearsal dinners, and no party houses. And if a policeman has to come out more than once or maybe even once, yank that permit. I mean, we shouldn't have to hear these stories of what these people are going through. But if there's a few of these scattered throughout our community that have had no issues whatsoever and have not had any damaging effect on their neighborhood, and their neighbors are in support and are fine with it, it's a win-win. And I just hope that we can keep it going with restrictions and with enforcement. I think we can make this work. It's not rocket science. I think we can make this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Good evening, Larry Vermeulen. And I do like to face the folks I'm speaking to. You know, I appreciate that there are a number of good short-term rental operators and that they are following the law and doing their best to minimize their impact. And perhaps I would be in favor of short-term rentals if they were units, if they were restricted to large parcels, country lanes, edge of town. But that's not what the ordinance says. And Kathy really hit the nail on the head when she said, perhaps there are places in town where they don't belong. And I think it's our position that those places are every place where they weren't three years ago. They don't belong in residential neighborhoods. The very first section of the short-term rental ordinance, Chapter 17.134.010, the municipal code, purposes and findings, in paragraph B, two very important purposes are stated. One, minimize the negative secondary effects of short-term rental use on the surrounding neighborhoods. And two, retain the character of neighborhoods in which such use occurs. These themes are stated again in Chapter 17.134.060, paragraph F pertaining to the renewal of STR permits, which says, "No permit shall be approved if the operation of the short-term rental has caused adverse impacts on the neighborhood in which it's situated or has otherwise caused a loss of character." What I don't think some of our friends understand is that simply having a short-term rental in the neighborhood is an adverse impact. I'm not talking about egregious behavior. I'm talking about the fact that you have a transient occupancy, you have people coming and going, service people, you have limos sitting out there idling endlessly while they wait for their party to get picked up. You have people coming home at 1:00 in the morning and laughing at the top of their lungs. You know, it is, it's a negative impact by its very nature. So you've heard ample testimony to the effect that having an STR unit in your neighborhood does create adverse impacts and does cause a loss of character to the neighborhood. If the property now used as an STR was formerly the home of a local family and is now occupied by transients, is it not obvious that there's been a loss of character to the neighborhood? If the STR was a weekend, is a weekend party house, is it not obvious that there's been adverse impact? So let me show you what impact looks like. That one was premature. This is the map we've seen earlier this evening. It locates the 22 currently permitted STR units. The ordinance talks about having to inform people within a 300-foot radius. You know, that's an arbitrary number, but for sake of argument, those are the 300-foot radii of each of the STRs that's currently permitted. And you've got people asking for more. I mean, are you kidding me? You're going to blot out the whole city? Okay. You'll notice there's nothing in the section I cited about mitigating the adverse impacts. It simply says a permit must be denied. That's because the framers of the ordinance were keenly aware that it could all go wrong and damage our neighborhoods. That's why it was to have been reviewed after one year, and permits are only good for two years. It was an experiment and it has failed. Another chapter states that one of the purposes of enacting the ordinance was to ensure the long-term availability of affordable housing stock. This clearly isn't working. A review of STR permits reveals that more than 30% of current STRs are owned by out-of-towner, and those are the only ones, those are just the ones that are registered out of town. These folks have no interest in our community. They're strictly in it for the money. In fact, we've yet to hear a single argument in favor of STRs. It wasn't about money. It's all about the money. It's either about folks wanting to fund their second home by renting it out on weekends or the alleged claims that if we don't provide alternative housing to tourists, they won't visit us. And finally, there's a lot of talk about the transient occupancy tax. But you'll notice there's nothing in the ordinance about weighing the benefits of the TOT or any other alleged economic benefits against the adverse impacts of STRs. In fact, that's not even the purview of this commission. Your job is to enforce the general plan and zoning ordinances, not look for sources of revenue for the city. That's the city council's job. Therefore, you must ignore all arguments in favor of STRs that are based upon their supposed financial benefits. And since you can't deny the negative impacts of STRs on our neighborhoods, I urge you to recommend to the city council to end this experiment and restrict commercial activities to those portions of the city where they existed before this ordinance was enacted. to those portions of the city where they existed before this ordinance was enacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Good evening again. I was very pleased to hear your comments about your interests and I was touched by that as being one of the people who are opposed to them. And like Larry said, I don't think it would be so bad if they were located in places where they weren't so close to our, our own residences, five, six feet away. I'm gonna take a different tact than on the noise. I'm gonna take a tact on how I feel they take away from our neighborhoods. I prepared this and I feel more comfortable reading it. I'm not very good at, at living, so. My wife and I have lived in St. Helena the majority of our lives. We've raised three children here. They've graduated from the schools. And my wife and I plan to live for the rest of our lives. And part of the reason why we love living here is because of the small town and because of the neighborhood we've lived in. When one of my neighbors leaves town and I see his trash cans out and he hasn't been able to pick them up, he's gone, I take them in. I know my neighbors, when, when one of their dogs gets away, and they do occasionally, I take the dog home because I know my neighbors. Several years ago, when my youngest child fell from a tree in my front yard, I wasn't home, but my neighbor took my son to the hospital. When my neighbor needs to go to the dump or one of my neighbors needs to go to the dump, they don't have a pickup truck, I've held their stuff for them. I'm a member of the local Kiwanis group in this community and I volunteer my time for the community. You might notice on the city main street, when the flags go up, at our, on our lights, you know, volunteers put those up, people who live in this community. What I'm trying to describe to you is something very special. It's special because we enjoy living in our communities as homeowners here. I'm, I'm up here tonight because I'm trying to protect that. I want to maintain it. If you haven't already guessed, I'm opposed to short-term rentals. Because they threaten the character of our neighborhoods. The tenants who rent these houses for a few days and nights have no ownership in our neighborhoods. They could care less about who is residing next to them. Having unmanaged STRs in our neighborhoods causes a loss to all of us who have homes in St. Helena. The only individuals gaining are the, are the STR owners themselves who profit from our loss as homeowners. Those of, those of us who have lived here for several years have already experienced firsthand an accelerated decline in our neighborhoods with a huge increase we've all endured with second homes. I can't think of anything to do to stop second homes from coming in our, in our neighborhoods. But at least we can control the number of, of short-term rentals. In conclusion, I have been walking around in the neighborhood and I was the person who this one lady spoke to and I approached that lady. We had a very pleasant conversation. I respected her, her, her opinion not to sign the petition. I explained it to her as best I could. She did explain that she spent a long time in France and she comes here just occasionally and she lives on, up on Spring Mountain Road, up by the, by the reservoir. She's, she's hardly impacted by these and I can completely understand why she wouldn't want to sign them. But almost everyone I've talked to in my neighborhood, and I've probably talked to 40 or 50 people, I'm not trying to sway them, I'm just trying to give them the facts of what's going on in our neighborhoods and the things that I've talked about tonight, the fact that we're losing something by not knowing our neighbors. And most everyone I've talked to, I'm being very honest, is opposed to them. So, and quickly, I know that I, I respect the officer, what he was saying, but three years ago, we had a problem resident in our neighborhood. We went to the mayor, we went to the chief of police, and they had a meeting with the, with the owners of this house and they weren't a short-term rental. But it just goes to show you how our noise ordinance is. There was never a citation issued by any of the officers in St. Helena because of, of the problems that we raised. In fact, the mayor and the chief of police said there wasn't anything that they could really do. It turned out where the person living next to them had to fi, sign several arrests and there was anger in our neighborhood and it was a pathetic thing. It really is. So it's been recognized and I appreciate your sympathy over those things, but I don't want to see them in my neighborhood. I don't want to live next to one. I want to know my neighbors and I want the continued relationships that I've enjoyed for the last almost 40 years to continue.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Kevin Diamond, resident at 1328 Magnolia. I'm also a member of the Chamber of Commerce and I'm also one of seven members that sits on the tourist improvement district, which administers St. Helena's portions of the transient occupancy tax in the city. I think I'm also a responsible member of the hospitality industry in St. Helena and I'd like to speak from that perspective and to sort of advocate for responsible dialogue on this issue. I won't say whether I'm for short-term rentals or not, but I think that there needs to be a very responsible dialogue on this issue. And one of the things, because I am involved in the lodging industry, is every day I see an email blast from a blog or from a very responsible industry, newspaper or magazine. And the entire country that relies on tourists as part of their economy is faced with this very same issue. And from my perspective, unless there's a city and a community that has overwhelming revenue resources to ban short-term rentals, it will be a long, long fight, even though I'm not gonna turn and face the citizens that are my neighbors and I really empathize with them. If you think you have troubles now with enforcing a short-term rental ordinance that is in place and is working and trying to improve itself, wait till there is no ordinance that's in place other than no short-term rentals. It will be the Wild West out there. Free market will take place and people will continue to rent short-term rentals and it will be an uphill fight for you to win that. I really think that part of this solution needs to be that there's responsible dialogue. And many of the people that have short-term rentals are very responsible members of this community. And I know that they're committed to working to enforce this so that it benefits all members of the community. You know, we can't legislate our neighbors. We can't. I live in a community that has very responsible members of the community. It also has low-income housing in the community. We just had a couple homes that were leased out to multiple students that attend a very prestigious university here in the city. They do make extra noise, believe me. My wife is one of those phone calls that goes out. But I do believe, believe me, if there's a short-term rental across from us, there's not enough police in the city to answer her phone calls. I promise that. But I do believe that in the case where we've got students that are causing too much noise, the community members in that community will band together and go to that home and say, this is the way that we live on this block. This is the way that we live in this community. And that will be responsible engagement that will benefit all. And I think it applies to this as well.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Byron Smith, and I do have a short-term rental. Just a couple of things that have come up that I'd like to clarify before I get into my planned little talk here. I'm very aware of the VRBO site. I look at it occasionally, we're on it. And I think you need to look a little deeper, about 60 of those are 30 days or longer. So 30 is too many to be otherwise classified, but it's not specifically short-term rentals that are licensed. And also, I just, I take it for granted that all short-term rentals follow the rules that are in place, which is no noise after 10 o'clock if there is. And we do notify neighbors within 300 feet with primarily our number, of course, our managers. And I've never gotten a call from a neighbor, but I'd be horrified if there was noise and they didn't just call me, you know, rather than the police. Because of course, I always have a cell phone number as a person staying there and I would call them in an instant and take care of the problem if there was one. On a more positive note, I'd like to talk about the idea of local serving businesses. I don't think maybe that's been covered, you know, in all the talk tonight. I think we can all agree that in the room that we support the concept of local serving I'd like to consider that vacation rentals support the concept of local serving businesses. It goes beyond the obvious, which is that the rentals support restaurants, tot and wineries, those are the big things. But I have a guest, I've seen a guest receipt they left behind from Sunshine Market that is for the weekend was bigger than my budget for a month of groceries. Our insurance, we've substantially increased our insurance coverage with our local agent, which we pay on a semi-annual basis. Concentrate the Central Valley and Steve's to keep the place, you know, sharp and not to mention, unfortunately, the local plumber who comes more often than he did before we started this business. Like most short-term rentals, we have local cleaning, yard care manager where we never did before. Most of those people live locally and in some cases have children in our local schools. Many times, local residents have rented our home to house relatives and friends who, where other accommodations were either too expensive or simply not available. A few examples, numerous local family reunions, a Vineyard Valley resident hosting a birthday party for her daughter if she doesn't have room and family. And recently, it lost me the request due to a sudden death of a member of a local winery family to house family members so they could attend the funeral in a convenient manner. So please consider that the opportunity to operate a short-term rental often helps local residents stay local, you know, transitioning to retirement, trying to stay home with a child, putting kids through college are all reasons that I've heard in the, our meetings as a group, that people do this. There's probably 25 different reasons, but it, by and large, I think the people, our local residents, we live here, you know, we rent, I think we're one of the more active ones and we have 90 days roughly that we rent. So that means, you know, we're here mostly the other time. And then finally, I'd just like to think, have you think of the short-term rentals as 25 mini ambassadors for St. Helena? We are uniquely qualified to promote the benefits of staying in St. Helena. Otherwise, we won't stay in business. And I believe the corresponding benefits that I've mentioned above will be diminished as well. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's David Tate. We live on Spring Street. First of all, just having listened throughout the course of the last hour, I couldn't imagine having to live beside some of the things you've had to endure, some of you folks. I'd probably be up here with a lot less pleasant signs than the first gentleman. I would not be able to take that. We, we live here and we have ownership in our neighborhood. And something that's kind of disconcerting when we, we discussed with our neighbors about whether or not they would have a problem if we were permitted for our little unit, subunit, legal subunit, if, if they would have a problem, most of them said they would not. But when I say most of them, we don't know our neighbors. We're surrounded by second homes. We're surrounded by people who live there for a month, maybe a little less, a year. And those are popping up all around us, actually. And it's, it's kind of disconcerting that, you know, we, we talk about neighborhood and growth and, and we're kind of losing that. But back to short-term rentals, you know, we, we wouldn't impact much in the sense because we are taking ownership in our own place as well. My fiance mentioned, we live where our little unit is. We wouldn't put up with any noise whatsoever ourselves. And I think one of the biggest things that can't be understated is that unfortunately, if, if this isn't regulated, it's going to happen anyway. And then people are just gonna be popping them up with disregard to the law. And the law is that we should have some permits so we can control them. And anyone who's causing any kind of issues, those permits should be yanked immediately and distributed to people who want to, you know, who are a part of their community and making sure that their neighbors are okay with them having them. You know, a lot of other counties are looking at it in a way of owner occupied. And I think that's a stance that we should look at it, definitely. People who are actually here, not people who are buying a home just to rent it out, they obviously don't care about our community. So those, those are the, the main focal points, owner occupied. It's a way a lot of counties are going about it because people actually are here in the neighborhood and they want to make sure their neighbors are happy with them and they themselves care about the neighborhood itself. And just a last note, we had some guests come and stay with us from Nashville at our home, good friends of ours from many years. And within a number of five days, they spent about $8,000 here in our little town. So that's, that's no small beans, but times out by a, a number of people that would be visiting through the permits. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Good evening. Matthew Demchuk, 1702 Tainter. I am also a short-term rental permit holder. My, my permit was one of the only ones that actually came before the planning commission because it was opposed by the, by a certain number of neighbors, which actually was, was a campaign that was, you know, done by one individual. But I kind of feel that that, that my, my application kind of opened the box for this whole discussion because I think shortly after that, the city council came, you know, brought up with the city council. But the reason that I sought a short-term rental permit was because our home is a family home that's been in the family since 86 and my parents are both deceased and it's in a family trust. And this was a way for me to be able to provide some income so that we could keep the home so that we could still use it. The, you know, I, I live here in St. Helena, I have three kids here in town and my family still wants to come and use the home. I think that, I agree with the option too. I think that there should be some revisions made, specifically in regards to the renewal. I do have some concerns with the current language of the renewal process, specifically in regards to complaints. I think they should be confirmed complaints, not just complaints. And I also think that just a simple violation of the ordinance shouldn't be a, a cause for, for non-renewal. I think it should be a cause to possibly discuss it, bring it in front of the planning commission or something to, of that effect. There is a tremendous network, you know, with, with us, with the permit holders. We're all on a DL that we get, we communicate with each other, we talk about the issues. I think we're trying to self-police our, you know, our, our fellow permit holders and are opposed to those that, you know, are violating the ordinance, that, that are legal permit holders that are violating the ordinance or specifically the illegal ones. I also think, you know, I looked up the TOT on the, on the financial page of the city and if you look page of the city and if you look at that, you know, 144,000 in, in 14, 15, but if you look at the trend right now for 15, 16, there's actually the, the occupancy rates are going up and also the revenue is going up. And I think, you know, and what Jim brought up was, you know, that a lot of us like me, I just started getting, you know, I just started doing this in July and I'm starting to ramp up my, you know, the renters and so forth. So I think that the revenue, I mean, I know they don't want us to talk about the money, but I think that's one of the reasons why the city did this was to generate revenue where there, there was none before. And, you know, the illegals are going to continue to, to operate, but having the ordinance and enforcing that ordinance, I think is the best way to go. And I really think that, that repealing it would be, would be a mistake at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, and before I close the public hearing, I know that Commissioner Coburnstein had a question for one of the speakers. Are, are you satisfied? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and invite Commissioner discussion. I, I actually would like to start and just say thank you everyone for coming and providing all of this information. It's, it's really helpful to hear it numerous times and you learn something new every time and just wanted to start off the conversation with that and Commissioner Monet.
I was wondering, are we going to go through the ordinance page by page, the changes as we have?
No, I think that we need to really, you know, I'm going to take a little bit more of a lead on this. I think that we really need to just focus on the three recommended, the three options that we're going to suggest to city council on to going, um, either a full prohibition to make revisions and, or to increase the numbers. And I think we should po- probably tackle that first and then get into the discussion if we want to do any changes, um, for instance, for number two or number three. So.
Let me start?
Yes, I would love for you to start.
Okay, and I've written my comments, so most of them will be read. My main concern is about protecting our neighborhoods and our sense of community. Therefore, I feel that our focus should be on short-term rental property locations and ownership involvement on, on the oversight of the STRs. Many people are trying to maximize profits at the expense of existing St. Helena residents and some of the STR owners are out of town individuals that purchase a second home in St. Helena, remodel it and make it like a mini hotel. I believe there's a trend in most of the letters that I read in support of the SDP ordinance, not all, indicating that this is their business and the SDP in St. Helena is not the only one they operate. They have little interest in being a part of our, of the fabric of our community. It is their business. As a result, our middle-class housing stock continues to be depleted while computer employee, uh, commuter employee traffic congestion worsens. This could be rectified by an onsite management or local ownership as a part of the requirement. This would also result in less noise, partying and parking issues as the open, as the onsite person would become a part of the neighborhood and answerable to their neighbors. And another option would be consider which areas of town, um, central business district, agricultural zone, et cetera, where the STR would be away from traditional neighborhoods. If this is not broad enough, we could consider restricting them, number of STRs that can be operated in a given neighborhood. Uh, we could place a limit on how many days, a month or a year that these properties can be rented out. I can support re- short-term rentals if our neighborhoods can be protected and that we continue to be the community that we should be. I know we need the TOT, so let's work together to solve the problems, including the lack of enforcement by the ordinance, uh, of the ordinance by the city. So I, I would have no problem, uh, with, uh, proposing item number two, uh, if in fact we can work together and, and it's not just shoved down everybody's throats.
Thank you. Commissioner Monet or Coburnstein?
You want to go?
No, go ahead.
Um, okay, I have some stuff, um, written down too. First of all, I think that it should only be for occupancy. I think that, I think the second option is, is, um, is appropriate, but I think there should be major, not just minor changes. And I think, um, that one of them should be that only owner occupied homes can, can have an STD permit. Um, and let's see, first of all, I just wanted to say that revenue from TOT should not be the primary variable considered when dealing with these STRs. The mental and physical health and safety of neighbors and residents should be absolutely the primary consideration. Um, and we didn't have the money before we had the ordinance, you know, so I mean, the city, the city would not die if we did rescind this ordinance. I think we should try to tweak it and, and come back. I think we should absolutely come back in a year and see if it's working with the option of, you know, doing, you know, taking appropriate, um, responses to whatever we would see at that point. I don't think the ordinance can be completed without an adequate enforcement plan that is defined and in place and the purpose of which includes a way to handle complaints, including record-keeping, fine enforcement, permit removal enforcement, to pursue, um, illegal STRs and enforce fines on an ongoing basis with the use of TOT funds. I think the TOT funds initially were seen as a way to, because this first came up because there were so many illegal, um, short-term rentals and neighbors were complaining and there was all, the only ordinance we had was they weren't allowed. So there was no enforcement, no money for enforcement. So part of the reason was to make an, uh, an ordinance that would provide a way to enforce it. So my sense is that no matter how much of the TOT needs to be spent on enforcement, that should be where the TOT goes first. And if that means the TOT needs to be hiked up, so be it, I don't know what that involves, maybe that involves an election or, um, you know, I don't know. But I, I think that the main purpose of the TOT should be to enforce, um, the, and the ordinance for legal STRs and to get rid of the illegal STRs, which was, was the thing that precipitated this ordinance in the first place. I think the term, term neighborhood needs to be defined, you know, and it's similar to what, um, Commissioner Kistner was talking about. Um, you know, is it the area within 300 feet of the STRs? A maximum number of STRs allowed in each neighborhood, however it's defined, needs to be determined. Should less, and also the question, should less dense areas closer to commercially zoned or rural areas have most of them? Someone mentioned that in the audience, that they shouldn't be in the dense residential neighborhoods. That needs to be looked at and decided upon. Permit term needs to be defined, I believe. We're talking about in perpetuity. It seems to me that you, I, I thought maybe we should consider something that if there's a waiting list, um, and then we, we would have, we would rotate after two, two-year terms, after four, uh, years and the, the person whose term expires, or when the term expires, when the second term expires, they go to the bottom of the waiting list, the person on the top of the waiting list gets to be vetted for the, um, not automatically approved, but be vetted for a permit. This would share the wealth and would also share the burden in the neighborhoods. So I, and that's just an idea. I thought that we might be talking about something like that, a rotating, a rotation. There should be no incentive to maximize the number of days that, that need to be rented. Um, let's see, and the main purpose of the, yeah, I said that. Let's see, I think that originally, again, I wanted to repeat that the main purpose of this, as stated when it first was, was originally, um, put together was to have a way for residents, for owner occupied residents to supplement their income by renting out their residence while they were on vacation. That's how it first started. So, um, anyway, uh, let's see, I have a lot more to say, but I think that's good from, for now. I have a lot of ideas about different changes, specific changes in the ordinance that you've proposed and I'm hoping we'll get a chance to go through that. I don't know if that's what tonight was supposed to be about, but, um, that's all I'll say for now.
Thank you.
Oh, I do want to say that the citation, in case there's a, a complaint, I strongly feel that should go to the owner and obviously, and not the, not the STR, those people, who knows where they're going to be? They're going to show up in court? Um, that's kind of, that's cra- crazy. Um, and there, there's more to say, I'll stop. Thank you.
I didn't write anything down because I wasn't sure how I felt about this. It's been a very interesting evening and there are very strong feelings on both sides. I have personally, I think, been tending to the view that this should be, uh, this is a license, it's a privilege that should be restricted to residents of the community. I'm not sure that it has to be restricted to owner occupied. I did hear some, uh, comments tonight of people who live in the community, uh, but they rent out a different home that they have in the community. And I think as long as there is that community, uh.
Connection.
Connection, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I think those are the units that are not causing the problems. Nobody wants to have a party house next to them. And that's exactly what you're asking for when you have a non-resident who rents out a place. And I wouldn't want one of those next door to me, nobody would. And we have to find a way to make it a community-based operation. I agree with everything you said about enforcement. I think the term should be shorter. I, I think that this is, this is part of the overall hospitality issue that the community is grappling with now. And I, I think some, there were some valuable comments about the fact that there's a need for these because there are not sufficient hotel rooms or other accommodations for people in our own community. And maybe that will change over time. And so maybe 25 is the right number now. Um, in another year or two, we might think that there's a different number that's appropriate. So I would be in favor of maybe a one-year term, not an automatic renewal. It may get to the point where there has to be a lottery or something, I, I don't know. I feel strongly we have to do something about keeping these from being clustered in any particular neighborhood. Um, and perhaps that, that's one of the things that triggers plan commission review if, if there's another one within a certain distance of a proposed, uh, permit. I'm wondering if there should be some regulation about timeout, you know? On the one hand, you want to maximize the use to, to gain revenue. On the other hand, it's nice to say, uh, you can't have 14 consecutive days of renting or, you know, something, uh, to calm the use down, I think, for the other neighbors. As far as the existing ordinance, um, I think it permits way too many people in a home. And we can talk about these specifics, but five bedrooms and two times the number of bedrooms plus two more people? I mean, who needs that many people in a place? And who wants that many people next door to them? I think along with enforcement, I think something has to be done to publicize the legal uses that are in town and promote them, um, make people aware of the fact that they may be renting from a place that is not licensed, uh, not inspected, something to give the benefit to the people who are operating the way they should be operating. Um, but I feel very strongly, I agree with Bobby, that if the TOT money is needed just for enforcement and to root out the illegal, uh, STRs, I think it should be put to that use because I, I believe that they, in combination with absentee owner, uh, STRs are the ones that are really causing the problems.
Thank you. So what I gather is that we are moving on with option number two, make revisions to the ordinance. And I am also in agreement with that movement forward. I have a few comments. It's, uh, not so much of a need for the TOT tax or the lack of hotels, but also, as has been mentioned tonight, that unregulated short-term rentals are even more difficult to enforce than the legal short-term rentals. And that was also one of the main reasons that this ordinance was drafted in the first place. I, I agree with that there's a cluster situation that, that needs to go forward and I'm going to actually stop myself. Do you want to know these things now or do you want just the recommendation and we should deal with this with the ordinance? Okay. Um, I like the idea of owner occupied or a St. Helena residence. I know that we need to look into the legality of restricting it to that, but I think that, like you said, the connection to the community, the owner of the property having to see their neighbors of their second home in Sunshine allows for a more open dialogue of what is going on. I feel that a lot of the frustration is because you feel that you're not able to communicate what's going on with the appropriate persons. Um, if you could look into Roanoke Park, I believe that they cite the owner of the property and their citations are extreme. I think it starts with $500 and the second is $5,000 for violations. Um, so very extreme and I think would send a very strong message, so see how their verbiage is written. Um, and again, just to say, I know that it's, it's really, it's not so much about the revenue because a lot of the TOT is going to the enforcement, but if we remove the, if we remove the ordinance and don't get the TOT, we're just going to waste more money because we're going to have to then go after the short, the illegals and it just could create a frustration and a decrease in revenue. And so if that's what the T, if that's what the revenue is going to is to the enforcement and making our community safe, then, and our neighborhood safe, then, then that's what it goes to. But it's better than spending money that we don't have in the first place. I also wanted to say that the enforcement of the police, thank you for that connection. I know that we're working on giving a bite to the, to the noise ordinance and giving a bite to the police department to be able to allow that and to also cross-check reference because like Sergeant Fleming said, it's hard to know what the house is. Some people don't know the address, but you know, a review afterwards of maybe a bubble of addresses might be helpful. I also think that the comment of people who are abusing their permits, because I think that's the people, the neighbors that are here complaining, those permit holders are abusing their permit, clear and simple. And we do need to find a way to take those permits away. Uh, but I don't think it should just necessarily because someone complained, it, do you think it needs to, there needs to be some vetting to making sure it's a valid complaint. Um, I think that, that would, just to have an even playing field for everyone. Um, I think that is about it, um, for right now. I know that we'll probably get this back again after city council takes a look at it, but I think that's a nice place to start.
Could I say a couple more things?
Of course.
Um, I, yeah, I also thought that, um, there might be something in the ordinance that supports, um, it defines and supports a neighborhood group consisting of the STR owners, the neighbors and the, and a member of the police department. I have had trouble in my neighborhood with, um, long-term renters and that neighborhood group was a very, was very helpful in terms of enforcement and, um, education and, and building community. Um, I also wanted to say that any application that, I mean, there are two places, you want to wait till we get the ordinance? But, but, but I, first of all, I think all applications for short-term rental should come to the planning commission. I don't think there should be any requirement that 30% of the two people complain, adjacent property owners complain, they, because of the impact that they have, even when they're run perfectly. Because someone in the audience mentioned that just having strange people, even if they're quiet and having, you know, all the, of all the consequences of having, um, people sho- doing short-term rentals does impact you. I think they should all go automatically. I don't think any of it, any of that should be ministerial. And I think when there's a breach of rules and you pull the permit because of that breach, it says that you may deny it. I think if there's a breach, it shall be denied because I think if there's a breach, there needs to be an appeal so that there can be public scrutiny over what's going on. So, uh, there are two places where there's the word "may" that, that could be changed to "shall" for that, to that end. Um, yeah, and I think too, that even if we get this tweaked to really, really, a really great place, that because no matter how good everyone is, it still does impact the quality of life, that we should review it, I said before, after a year. And also another point, when someone is not owner occupied but community connected and renting their, a home, want their home as a short-term rental, that takes that home off the market for a long-term rental so that someone who could be there full-time is not able to be there. And sometimes people do that because they like their family to visit sometimes, but it's just something to look at in terms of the quality of the neighbors, neighborhoods and, um, full-time residents and the importance of full-time residents, um, so that you can know who your neighbors are if you want to.
I also have another question. Do you want us to get into your revision suggestions tonight or no? Okay.
I, I would like to make one comment.
Yes.
And then I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I, I feel that once the enforcement takes place, that we're not going to lose all the TOT to, to enforcement.
Oh, I agree. I think that once it gets rolling.
Gets the rules and knows it's going to be enforced. Gets the rules and knows it's going to be enforced, that the complaints are going to drop and therefore we won't be spending so much of the TOT on that.
I feel it will be a little bit of, less of a whack-a-mole.
And I'd like to make a motion that we change...
Grace, one sec.
One word in this number two. It says make minor revisions. I would make a motion that we make revisions to the ordinance and improve enforcement mechanisms, allow time for these improvements to be enacted and properly enforced and review the ordinance again in a short time to see if the community impacts are less...
Commissioner Koberstein, did you have something you wanted to add?
I'll second the motion, but could we just have a bit more discussion?
Yeah, of course. So let's not second it and let's continue the discussion.
I feel strongly if the, when these come to us, we need some decent standards in the ordinance to determine how to grant them or not. What you're faced with is how many neighbors show up, you know? Or are they right next door or are they two blocks down the street? And I think that to the extent they're going to come to the planning commission for review, there has to be more in there, you know? More substantive standards for us to make a decision. I also feel that if somebody is operating illegally, they shouldn't be on the waiting list. We had a very strange case where we had an illegal who was at the top of the list.
Thank you for bringing that up.
And we had to deal with the application. And in my view, if you're operating illegally, you'd never get on the list. And that should be maybe some incentive to try to run a legal operation. I don't want to get too far into the nitty-gritty. There, I agree, there's a lot we could do to make the ordinance stronger and better and I think that's the direction we should go.
So Steph, just to summarize what we're hearing from the commission, generally, commission, if there are to be revisions to the ordinance, if that's the direction the council supports, which it appears like the commission's going to vote to give some formal direction. But if that is the case, the commission would like to see the ordinance revised to create more ownership involvement in STR operations. Potentially improve, or definitely improve enforcement potentially through more dedicated TOT towards it. Look at the density or clustering of the locations of TOT, I'm sorry, of STR operations and create or improve the mechanism to revoke permits based on problem homes or problem operators.
Well, I want to know...
And to beef up the enforcement significantly.
There was a lot more. Do you want, you want some email input?
I have, I took detailed notes of every statement that was said by each commissioner, however.
You're just summarizing.
Those are the ones that I heard mentioned by each commissioner. So Steph's going to take the voice of the commission, not every individual comment.
Yeah, we did have a second. This is just a recommendation to city council. This isn't changing the ordinance yet. City council then has to make a decision and direct it back to us on what we want to do.
Then we'll have a chance to...
Absolutely.
Tear that baby apart.
Absolutely.
As a commission, not individual commissioners.
Yes. All right. And do we have a, would you like to just redo your motion? You don't have to read it over, just Jim had it the first time, probably.
It's exactly what's on the paper, except I want to take minor out of the number two, Jim. It says make revisions to the ordinance and improve enforcement mechanisms, allow time for these improvements to be reenacted, to be enacted and properly enforced and review the ordinance again in a short time to see if the community impacts are less...
Grace, Grace. Your microphone, but he had it the first time, so if we could just get a second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Koberstein?
Yes.
Terpresa Parker?
Yes. I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and giving us all of your input. It is greatly appreciated and I, we all wholeheartedly appreciate and enjoy your community support. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.